I hereby call to order this committee of the whole minutes. It is Monday, May tenth, two thousand twenty-one. The time is April two. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Amy Phaling.
Here.
Johnson's ready.
Here.
Anne Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Here.
Frank Panzico.
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Here.
Erin Stone.
Here.
I seek a motion to approve the April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one committee of the whole minutes.
I move to approve the April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one committee of the whole minutes.
May I have a second?
Okay.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the next? Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Johnson's ready.
Yes.
Anne Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Frank Panzico.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Yeah.
Erin Stone.
Yes.
Amy Phaling.
Yes.
Okay, we'll begin the meeting with Facility Development Committee, and I'll turn that over to Panzico.
Good morning, everybody. Um, the first thing on the agenda is the update on the summer two thousand twenty-one, this summer construction project, and I believe it's on metal. Corey or should we, uh, Joe, you're, you're up. Okay.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning. Hi, Joe, we can't see you, but we can hear you.
I'm actually commuting this morning, so unfortunately, you don't get to see me.
We were also just commenting that we don't give donuts anymore.
I, I heard that. I think moving forward, uh, I think we need to get back to the routine of five years plus.
Right. Well, thank you for joining us.
No problem. Well, with regards to McKenzie and Ramona, the, uh, the streak of limited precipitation has, uh, has led to just great progress since spring break. And I mentioned this, uh, at the last update. We haven't lost much time whatsoever. We've lost one day of work due to the weather. The masonry contractor at both Ramon and McKenzie, uh, they've worked the last couple of Saturdays as well, so we could not be happier with the progress, um, that we see. Uh, over the next, uh, week and a half or so, we'll continue running our concrete masonry units, so you'll see the concrete block that's going up. All of that work leads to steel joists and deck. So that's really been our focus, um, at both sites over the last couple of weeks. Um, and this week looks great weather-wise, and we anticipate achieving bearing some point next week with steel joists and deck to follow, uh, which we're monitoring very closely, as I'm sure most of you have heard, uh, different industries are affected with long lead times and lots of unforeseen types of things, so uh, we're checking in on a daily basis to make sure that, uh, steel is ready when we're ready. Other than that, we're just doing general miscellaneous mechanical, electrical plumbing type roughing that needs to go in, in conjunction with, uh, with the CMU work. So other than that, um, everything else is, uh, pretty much just in the queue, and, uh, we're anticipating hopefully, uh, being under roof here in early June, leading to a summer critical build-out within the addition spaces. Um, and then with regards to interior spaces, um, those will come online, um, once this academic year, um, concludes. So all is well, uh, with regards to just, uh, our contingency and allowance. Uh, we're still, we're still around the two hundred thousand remaining in allowances. Unforeseen conditions, um, has been, has been pretty minimal, um, from commencement. So again, across, across the board, we're, we're happy with where we're at.
Has the, um, Central Avenue, uh, work been, uh, impacting you the way you predicted?
Um, it's, well, we're, we're not at Central right now.
Okay.
So it, it doesn't have an impact on our current, uh, current work.
Sorry about that. Um, any, uh, any questions on this, uh? Seeing none, thank you. We'll move on to, uh, the next item, update five-year capital project summary, and that I, I know. Yep.
All right, thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Joe.
Share my screen. All right, so this, this one-page document should look familiar. This is our, kind of our five-year project list with the, with your, uh, financial amounts associated with each, um, with each project. So what I've done since the last time we worked with this project is gone out for any of the projects in years twenty-two through twenty-six and added four percent per year for inflation, uh, construction-related inflation. And then on here, I've highlighted in that pinkish color, projects that were kind of in the planning process for next summer. Um, I'll talk, on the next agenda item, I'll talk more about what we might do next summer. One thing I do want to point out that, as I went through the exercise of adding construction inflation, and we'll have some more updated numbers next month at a committee meeting, but just by adding four percent per year, the range of total cost that adds to all these projects is between one point seven and one point nine million dollars. Um, that just kind of depends on which summer, some of the projects that are, could, could fall between a couple of different years. So, um, you know, when you think about a big picture, it's not insignificant, but it's certainly something that we have to be aware of, and, um, we're certainly have our eye on that. So this is updated, obviously, I'll update this again as we get some, uh, some of the more focused cost estimates for, for the projects that we're looking at for next summer. There's any questions about this, she, otherwise I will move on to the summer twenty-two, two projects.
I had a couple of real quick ones, and then we'll see if there's anybody else. Um, for, just a reminder, and for the new members, the color coding on here, the green is, uh, approved projects that are locked in, committed. Um, the yellow projects, which aren't any on here right now, we've made significant progress in designing, there's some organizational, um, commitment to it, but not a final, um, board commitment. And then the, the red, um, projects are the ones that are in the queue. There's no organizational or financial commitment, but we want to make sure that we have a way of looking out over five years so that we can spread things out and, and have steady plans. So, um, so that, that's just kind of a baseline, um, definition issue. The, um, the order that we have, the things outside of the green is not fully locked in. So that's something that we need to discuss, and I don't know if today or the next meeting or tee-up today, what, what items we'd like to kind of discuss, I have some ideas on that, but if you can bring that up as we go through the rest of the agenda. So with that baseline, um, does anybody else have any comments on this part of the? Excuse me, patience.
I just had a question, um, for something like, for example, the Ramona cafeteria. It's broken up over two years, is that because it would take two years to complete?
No, so the way that this particular slide, it's a kind of a combination, I try to overlay the projects with the fiscal year that they would be charged to. So like, the Ramona cafeteria would be, under this proposal would be, or this timeline would be done over the summer of twenty-two, but like, part of the hard cost would hit fiscal year twenty-two, and then a bigger part would hit fiscal year twenty-three. So that's kind of the split you see for every project.
Okay, thank you.
That's, again, as a baseline, the fiscal year July first, so work like we're doing now for the summer counts in one fiscal year, and what we actually do in the summer counts in a different fiscal year. Oh, um, so I, I like seeing the security upgrades. Should we plan for more of it in the future? It doesn't seem light for budgeting to me.
We have accomplished quite a lot of security upgrades over the last several years that has been a focus of ours. Um, and Tony keeps an ongoing list of kind of the next steps in security upgrades, so I would ask Tony, um, do you feel as though we are investing sufficiently in that, in addition to some of the other work, obviously, that we're doing?
Yeah, the fifty thousand, actually, that was a number that I had provided, uh, for just the projects that we know about currently. A couple of years ago, the board had committed two hundred thousand dollars to significant, uh, security upgrades across the district, everything from doors to cameras to name it. Uh, right now, I mean, we've accomplished a lot. Um, right now, the only thing that maybe I could foresee is at some point a wholesale replacement of security cameras, but that hasn't even, right now, they're functioning, replaced as needed, we get the footage we need. So, I guess as of this moment, I don't have an identified project that would have an associated cost to it. I suppose it's always possible that as, uh, recommendations come out, we look at trends, somebody recommends something, there could be a cost there, but as of now, there's not one identified that would have a cost. So it would just, you know, we don't want to throw a number for something we haven't identified. I guess that's my take on it.
So on that one, there's always an overlap facility, you know, overlap with budget and strategy and all that type of stuff. It might be worth considering somewhere in the next two, three months, having, uh, an update and one appropriate meeting of what our security future needs might be. And, you know, if there aren't that many, there aren't that many, that's great, if there are some that we want to tee up, that, we can do it in, in a different forum, and then if we decide to do it, then we bring it in.
That would be fine.
So somewhere on the to-do list, you know, not immediate, but no other system, to have a small update, probably could I do? And.
I just wondered if you could give me a quick reminder of how, what process we go about to prioritize certain for the building, like, when Ramona windows get done versus the roof. I know it's very thoughtfully analyzed, but it would be hopeful to just have a refresh of how that gets set up.
If you're fine, I will, planning to address that in the next agenda.
Perfect.
Is there something in that section? All right, Corey, you want to take them?
So the, the next thing to talk about is potential projects for the summer of two thousand twenty-two. Just because we need to start thinking about them, so kind of the lens with which I'm kind of viewing this process for the, for the, for the administration and the board is, today I'll kind of share some ideas of what I think the potential projects are. Then, next month, I have, you know, obviously I've updated the cost a little bit. Then for June, um, Joe will have some, some additional updated, numbers, plus we're taking a little bit more of an in-depth look at a couple of the projects to provide the board some options. And at that meeting, while we're not asking the, we won't be asking the board for any, you know, official decisions, we, at least from my perspective, would like to get a feel for which way the board might be leaning as far as supporting certain projects. That way we can help formulate that in the budget, and then as we get to August, as we, you know, show the, the, the final budget to the board, um, it also coincides with, that's when we would need to kind of commit to projects in the sense that we're going to start incurring design costs. So, and August is really kind of the big decision point for the board as far as, okay, let's go ahead and start incurring design costs, knowing that we wouldn't be fully committed till probably January, February with bids. However, we still, you know, are incurring costs. Um, now, keep in mind, if we were to delay something, it's not like you lose design costs, um, but you are incurring in this year twenty-two. So that's kind of the lens with which I'm thinking about projects for summer of twenty-two. Uh, with that said, I just wanted to review timeline that we, that we have for these projects. This month, we're reviewing.
Those watching from home, we're just on hold for a minute as we update our screen. There we go.
So this month, we would review potential projects, June, review the project estimates provided by Nicholas and Associates. August, we would get the okay to incur design costs, including projects, uh, within the fiscal year twenty-two budget. Then between September and January, um, similar to prior years, the board would receive multiple design and cost estimate updates um, as we go through the iterations. Usually, uh, a cost update at sixty percent, then eighty or eighty-five percent. Um, December or January, we'd put the projects out to bid, the file, then January, February, the board would see the actual hard cost of construction, and there would be a vote on summer construction bids. The projects that will be under consideration, at least as of now, they don't appear to be of the scope like the key projects where we had to start at spring break. Uh, I believe that they would all be ones where we would start as soon as school gets out in June, and then they would be over by mid-August, ready for the new school year. And then as a reminder, as we've already said, board wouldn't be fully committed until they actually go on the bids.
About Frank's comment about the color coding, it would be the August go-ahead with design work that turns that to be more of a yellow color on our tracking sheet.
So our next slide is, um, shows that the same projects is on that color-coded sheet, but it's in a little bit different format. It shows basically the types of projects across all the schools, and then in each cell, I've got the years. Um, as you can see, the largest number of projects kind of in the pipeline are related to air conditioning, then you have some more like life safety issues. Um, the other categories, the boilers and roofs, immune events. So what are we considering for the summer of two thousand twenty-two? So let's just start kind of with the process of how would I look at it in each, in any particular summer. So the first, the first consideration in, in any summer is of things that kind of fall into the life safety that would preclude us from being able to use the school or cause a serious issue, roofs, boilers, um, HVAC, even to an extent, uh, windows, those kind of take priority over other things such as, such as air conditioning. Then the next lens is, I like to try and group projects. You know, if we know over a course of a couple of years, we're going to tackle multiple projects at a building, if possible, try to do them in the same summer. So one of the big things about Harper is for during calendar year twenty-two, Thornwood Park is going to have a stormwater project. It also coincides nicely with two projects that we had planned for the summer of twenty-two, which is a partial roof replacement. And I had, um, SDR, other roofing people, check on it last fall, said, yeah, we can, um, wait one more year, but we would need to address it during the summer of twenty-two. And then another thing that was in line there was a boiler replacement. So really, here is kind of where I see on some level, it's a decision point, I prefer it not to be, but one of the issues with the, as I've talked to our director of facilities and our, our HVAC staff, one of the issues with the boilers at Harper is that those particular boilers are, are steam boilers. And one of the issues that they've caused, and the ones before them were steam, and they have been giving us, given us a lot of problems, and we're to the point where we feel the best thing to do is, is to replace those boilers, but not just the boilers, it's the piping that runs from the boilers to the unit vents in each room. And as has been explained to me, one of the issues that has come with the steam boilers is that the piping has rusted out and corroded at a lot faster rate than if we had, we had installed hot water boilers, which is what is, is installed at the other buildings. And so the idea is that, at least as it relates to the, replacing the piping, you know, if you were to think, well, why not just replace each part as it fails, well, they're not necessarily in spots that are easy for our staff to get, some of them might require opening up walls. And so if we were to have an issue during the school year, depending upon the, the size of the leak or what's going on, it could either result in needing to turn off the, turning it off, or, you know, shutting down potentially the, the building. So we feel it's best to try and tackle that as, as well over the summer. So the line item that you see on there, the five hundred and forty thousand is an older cost in the estimate that's been rolled forward um, just for the boilers. So part of the, so part of the request to Nicholas and SDR is to go through the building, get a feel for, um, kind of the scope of the project with the piping, and then share that information with Joe, so that he can give us an idea of how much extra that would cost beyond five hundred thousand. From my perspective, um, it's probably going to end up being a pretty expensive project, but the flip side to that is, I'm not sure, at least from my perspective, I don't think that we have much of a choice, it's kind of falls under like, hey, we don't like it, but we need to address it, or we could have a, a much bigger issue at Harper at some point in the winter. Um, so that's kind of like one big piece of information that we're kind of waiting on that, um, I'm really interested to see for next month. Then the next project, or another project at Harper is adding the next large space air conditioning at Harper is the Gem, and that is, uh, tentatively in there at five hundred and thirty-one thousand. And then one last thing at Harper that I would propose that we include is kind of in the middle of the building, there's two sets, four bathrooms, two sets. And when you walk in there, they are, um, incredibly old and, um, in need of some updating. So one of the issues that we've run into there, as I've talked with our, uh, our plumber, is that, well, a couple of things. The what, the, the, particularly in the, in the boys' bathroom, the urinals, they flush every few minutes, regardless of whether they get used or not. So there is a, um, bit of a waste. The, the bathrooms themselves are very old, but when you go behind, the, the, behind the walls into the plumbing, one of the issues that, that has really got my attention is that there's usually three or four urinals in a bathroom, and the water flow fa- back in the walls all comes from, from, comes from one pipe. So if there would be a crack, and if you saw the urinals, some, many urinals are like on the wall, and there's a space between the bottom of them and the floor, these go from the wall all the way down. So if there was a cracker, if one of them needed to be fixed, or we needed to turn off the water, we would be turning off the water to all of them. There's no easy, easy way, and if you, uh, you saw some pictures of them, you would certainly understand. So that is another thing under consideration, and some old notes that was left for me, there was a, a placeholder that had it as two hundred, we have not um, really investigated or looked at, that'll be included in a future u- update. Um, what I would propose, it was, it relates to these bathrooms, is that when we do the bidding process, is that we would include it as a bid alternate, which would give, but give us some flexibility on whether to accept or reject it. I think it's certainly something that's worthwhile and we need to address. But, you know, just because this past year, the actual bidding results were really favorable and actually really great, it doesn't mean that they're always going to be like that, and I think having flexibility, um, come time, vote time for the projects is, is really important. Couple more projects, so, go ahead.
Before you move off of Harper, just because there's a lot of details there, if we have any questions, can we ask them now, or?
Um, well, yeah, well, there's several projects in our business, let's see if anybody has a question.
I, I had one, starting one. Um, so the numbers in the sheet that we have here, it doesn't include the potential need for more boiler-related items.
Right.
Does it include the two hundred thousand for?
No, it does not. No.
System-based, like. This was a complicated one, any other questions before we move on to other school?
Um, so what Thornwood Park, that has. Or is that bucketed in Harper, I think?
Well, it's just like across the street, so, at least as it relates to my thinking, A, we were going to do two, we were planning to do a couple of projects there, but as it relates to Thornwood, if we were thinking about what we would do program-wise next summer, I would avoid, we would probably avoid Harper at all costs. Um, I've seen the maps that the villages got, and while the stormwater will cover, you know, a big project within Thornwood Park and ripping that apart, there are also several streets that are having work done around there. So it's just from my perspective, as we think about summer of twenty-two, we would probably not plan to have any of our programs, so that then means Harper would be empty, and naturally, a good time for us to.
So it's similar to, it's not our project, but because it has so much impact on what's happening around it, it would be a school that would be less conveniently accessed for summer programming, both for us and for the park district, and so it makes some sense to try to pull together some of the projects at that same building. So as we were kind of talking about that prioritization, you heard Corey speak of, health, life, safety always, um, needs to be considered first. The board's priorities are projects that have been identified, so the Learning Commons was a set of projects, then, uh, the KEEP, kindergarten enrichment was a set of projects, and large space air conditioning. And so what we're try, what we try to do is to group those together, both because there's some efficiency and some savings when we do that, but also because we want our buildings to be available in the summer, at least some of our buildings. And so when we take one or two buildings offline for an entire summer, we want to make sure that those other buildings are available for summer school, for extended school year, and the park district does use our buildings in the summer, and, and we continue to want to make sure that that access is available, so it, it's kind of a puzzle that we're piecing together.
That makes a lot of sense to me, I, just to know the caution given on our theory and just planning in community hall field, I, I would be interested in seeing the work plans at Thornwood and how are they going to impact operations. Worried. Um, and the other piece on, um, the boiler replacement, it sounds like we don't. On the bathroom, I just wanted to understand it's often, but for young kids going in a, in a bathroom that's worn and tired and ugly, it's already frightening enough to go to the bathroom, too. Right? Like, I, I just think we should take a serious look at the bathroom here, because for all those reasons.
For your support of that.
Anybody else on, uh, this one? Might not have to do that in every school, but there are a lot of.
You know, I, I think Lisa raised a great point about Thornwood, and, uh, and I, I'm sure the community coordination is much better than before the last project. Um, it was really helpful, uh, for us to have a, a meeting with them to talk about, with the city, or sorry, the village, to talk about, uh, what was going to happen in the timeline and get on.
Maybe we could invite the village back to speak to the board and just give an overview of the project?
Or I'd want to. Or I'd want to.
Great, great.
And, and one of the things we, we found before is understanding their uh, their, their funding, because um, on some other projects, when their funding was from like state or federal, um, they didn't have control over doing it on the timeline that they understood. Um, if we know that their funding is a little bit more solid than we know the data a little bit more solid, if their funding is you know, at the whim of, of federal large apps, then you know, the data in play at least.
So I'm hearing some uh, recall of the uh, in-depth review that we needed to do for the um, playfields. The Thornwood Park project obviously is smaller and does not have the same direct impact on us in the park district as the other project did, but there certainly will be some impact. And so for that reason, we've listed it here and I think it's a, a good request for us to schedule a meeting just to understand what those impacts might be and what the timeline all that. So we'll, we'll work on that. Hopefully we can get something scheduled before uh, July.
All right, sorry to move on.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
You know, I really don't want to open up a can of worms, um, but I realize we don't look at this chart every committee at the hall. So I know we're talking about summer twenty twenty-two. I want to go back to the five-year, five-year plan. Um, you know, for what it's worth, and I'm not proposing we have a huge discussion about it, but I would just say that I, for one, um, see that, yeah, I think the plan to air condition large spaces over time was a good one. And I would support um, if it was affordable and fit in the budget, continuing to air condition classrooms like we did at the junior high over a long period of time. So just just putting that out there that I, that's something I would advocate for and support.
I think from a logistics standpoint of the section, this was Cory going over what currently.
No, I know, but there's a lot of white space in the years out, so.
I think there's a, a much broader conversation than we need to have about all of those type of things.
I, I absolutely agree. I'm just bringing it up now because I don't know when the next time we'll talk about this is. So I'm just, I'm just putting it out.
I think we should get to your topic. At the start on it today, but not in this section.
Okay.
Well, I think the answer is yet to be determined. Um, and that will depend on what those goal areas are identified within the strategic plan. If, if I were a guessing person, it's likely that some kind of fiscal responsibility, um, ongoing maintenance of facilities is an arm of the strategic plan. And so then this gets folded into that as something more regularly monitoring, reviewing. And a reminder for everyone, the microphones, if you can tilt it towards yourself, you will be better heard. You can even move the bass closer if you would like.
Thanks.
Okay, so Cory, why don't you continue on in this section? And then um, I think we do need to spend a couple of minutes on the, on the broader picture, or at, at the very least, what the next steps are to discuss the broader. But Cory.
So then the other project's under consideration for next summer. So next building is McKenzie. So then another question of why McKenzie or, you know, so it's really a, a couple of things. One, uh, McKenzie, as it relates to our large space and air conditioning initiative, they were on the list. It also combines with, as we, I think I mentioned previously, you know, on the, at McKenzie uh, second floor, there's a lot of asbestos work that needs to be done during the summer to over three years, replace the uh, all the, all the flooring and then install either tile or carpet. And so at least from my perspective, you know, we're doing a part of that this summer, we'll do a part next summer. Um, seems unlikely that we want to have any programming in a building that has asbestos work. And typically, we would try to do that asbestos work at the beginning of the summer, but um, as, as Dr. Krim's really talked about with, you know, it's not just us using the, the buildings in the summer, it's also the park district. So that's why McKenzie uh, makes the list as well. So the large gym at McKenzie would uh, receive air conditioning. The, the estimated cost is six hundred and three thousand. So here's the second, and this is more of a, I think a true option for the board to consider. And there's still some investigative work. Like I said, we will have SDR and then engineers and Nicholas give us an updated amount for next month as it relates to this alternate AC option. But basically the gist of it is instead of air conditioning just the gym, we would leave the gym as is. So the two gyms at McKenzie would remain without air conditioning. And instead, we would install a chiller. And then the remaining classrooms at McKenzie would receive air conditioning. Um, obviously, there's a price that, there's, there's a cost difference. Um, if we were to use a similar type of project, which is the junior high this summer, um, the hard cost of construction is, is about sixty-five thousand per classroom. So if we were to, and this is without, you know, the experts digging in on this, um, you would be looking at something a little bit more than double. So maybe it's one point three or one point two million. Uh, we won't know until Nicholas and SDR have had a chance to look at it and assess the situation. But I do think um, it is worthy of the board discussion and at least consideration of which option do we think about? Do we, or do we just do the gym? Do we spend a little bit more money than knowing that every classroom at McKenzie um, has air conditioning? And one of the reasons why this is uh, potentially easier than at other buildings is just the way that McKenzie was, was built um, many, many years ago. It just allows for a little bit easier of a transition to installing a chiller and then running air condition, running that chill cool water through the uh, unit vents in each classroom. So the one other component to McKenzie is in the summer of twenty twenty-four, there is a partial roof replacement. And if you were to look at McKenzie overhead, there's a lot of different definitive sections of the roof, much like what happened this year with the KEEP project. Over the cafeteria, the, the roof was gonna be replaced within a couple of years anyway, is in bad shape. We're gonna be doing a lot of work on it because of the cafeteria expansion. So we went ahead and included that within our work, um, received some really good economies of scale. And now that'll be taken care of. So either option we pick, we may have to move up some of the roofing work that was slated for twenty twenty-four. Um, just to incorporate it into this project if, like say that the part over the gym was part of, supposed to be in twenty-four. So that's just something to consider. Um, as we kind of firm up plans, that will come more into focus. And then the last project under consideration, at least as I've got things budgeted now, is Ramona cafeteria.
Wait, can I just get a question first on backup on McKenzie?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So this is a little surprising, the alternate, um, like, cause we had a philosophy of uh, doing air conditioning in big spaces. And so we would be saying, okay, we're doing classrooms in McKenzie only. And not, like, like we're, we're changing our direction. I just wanna understand a little more about your thinking in that. Um, because we're always also trying to be sensitive to kind of having a district-wide philosophy. And this would feel like a big departure.
This is one of the things, sorry, this is one of the things that we were hoping to get some board feedback on. Because you're right, it does represent a shift in our approach. Part of that shift, though, is because of the opportunity that is uniquely available at McKenzie and not at other schools based on the structure, the infrastructure of the building. And so it really is um, looking at the cost and the investment and trying to determine what makes the most sense. But you are absolutely correct. It does represent a shift. And once we make that shift, even though the cost and opportunity seems to point in that direction from a logical standpoint, it does then raise the question, are we able to do that at all buildings? And right now, we don't see um, that we're able to do it at all buildings. Should we not do it at one when the opportunity exists? So this is really, um, these are some ideas that we're, we're talking through and we're really interested in hearing board's feedback on um, one way or the other.
Finish that up. Thank you.
Yes, I'm not like saying this is a terrible idea. I'm just trying to understand it. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for highlighting it as well because you're, you're absolutely right.
Well, just to follow up with that, I want to know, is this the only school that is uh, well-suited to consider this? Or are there two other, you know, that would help me think about specificity? Is it the only option that is appealing in this way? Or are there one or two others as well?
So it's my understanding that only McKenzie was, was built this, or you know, recently constructed this way. Um, now you could, you could do AC at every building. There's a cost to it and you know, depending upon the layout, you know, kind of would hit at how expensive it gets, but um, and it would, it would be a lot um, at some of those buildings.
Yep. Part, part of why this was brought up is that two, three, four years ago, the factoid came up in one of the meetings that the, the duct work basically is the way I think of it. The McKenzie was unique. Um, and when we were getting near this, I, I asked that we at least have a op-, you know, have an understanding of what that meant. Um, the, the two sides of it is, I mean, we can do a, a large space, the uh, gym that has has use when it's hot, but it's uh, artificial use. Or for relatively less money, or more money, not do the gym and do all the classrooms which have you know, complete use if it's hot. Um, and it's unique for that one school. So financially, it, it would make a lot of sense for us to discuss. Um, I, the flip side of that is, you know, do we make a a non-financial decision because we don't want to whatever, um, you know, advantage one school over another? And I think that's something that's an appropriate discussion for the board to have. You know, do we artificially do less so that we don't look uneven? Um, and, and that's where we have to have the bigger discussion. And again, I think it's part of a bigger discussion, so we need to to kind of tie those together, just like team those ideas up.
Well, it just makes me think, you know, there are other things we think about. Is, is that a space that we could consistently hope to use in the summer for programming? If it's all, you know, I'm just thinking, this is sort of a new idea, but it could present a benefit to the community in addition to the ones we, if we went that direction.
So that, that's why it was, uh, that was why it was brought up, um, because it is unique and it's the right time to think about it. Um, and, and again, I think we have to look at all of those type of issues as, as a grouping.
On the timing then, we're just gonna go out to bed and ask for the two options. And then we have time to have this discussion. I just want to understand. Thank you. Yeah, and the timing.
So we have in, my understanding of the timeline that was shown here and my understanding, given that this is a quote-unquote new board, that we have some new members and new updates, is that this was, today was teeing it up. Um, next month is, you know, we think these are ideas worth considering in more detail that, you know, either as this is, or if we want to move some pieces around. And then August is, August, September is when we say, okay, we're narrowed in enough that these options are worth us spending some money on. My understanding of the, the timing.
The only, the only thing I would add as it relates, so I, what I would hope is that as we get, for each of these projects, as we get updated, Joe gives us, you know, current market conditions for these types of projects, gives us his estimates next month, is that it would help give us a little bit of clarity on how are we feeling about these? And while I'm not asking for a board decision then, the one thing I would point out for the McKenzie is that the, the two options are separate. And so it seems realistic to me that we would only pick one or the other. And so if one possible option certainly could be that we direct SDR to design both if we can't make a decision, if we haven't made a decision come August. Um, the only downside to that would be you're basically then paying for the design of two projects, knowing that one of them won't be used. So that isn't necessarily, that's, that'll be a, a good chunk of money. That would probably be the one downside to not having made a decision.
It's you, usually most of these projects, it's a, by the time we spend money, we pretty much decide we're gonna do it, but you know, maybe we move it out a year or pull it in a year. So this is a little bit different, that we'd actually have two competing proposals, that literally we'd only do one, because I, it's hard to imagine that if we did the whole building, that we'd also do the air conditioning.
So I um, I had one other topic, but I, I don't think you, we've let you get through your uh.
I just got Ramona.
Yeah, slide again.
So then Ramona, uh, at Ramona, the cafeteria is, is on the list of large space air conditioning. Um, so that would be done at about seven hundred and seventy thousand. So the one interesting thing about um, Ramona as it relates to these other projects, there's a lot of moving pieces, you know, certainly some decisions for the board um, to think about and, and give us direction in future months. The one thing I would say, you know, as, knowing that we have a limited amount of money each summer to do projects, if some of these other projects, um, as we like the boiler and the piping at Harper, or the AC option at McKenzie, if we were, some of the more expensive components, if a project that I'm mentioning today needed to be delayed a summer, my recommendation would be the Ramona cafeteria. Um, so that would, that would kind of play into things. And then I just, one last slide, it's kind of summarizes what we've got going on. Three projects this summer, um, some of the projects that we're kind of talking about as a preview, potentially for summer twenty-two. And then right now, the, the capital projects budget is uh, in the draft budget at five point one million dollars. So that is all the slides I have on summer twenty-two projects. Any questions or comments, discussion?
Yeah, I think you said it. So, so this, this number um, for twenty-two, so it's about five million dollars, it's in the draft budget?
Yeah.
Great.
That's what I.
So I, I had a couple. Um, when we're looking at the building use, um, that, that always seems like a, an important topic. On Ramona, right now, the um, the AC and the roofing are staggered. Is there a reason that those aren't? I mean, is there an advantage doing it that way? Or is there a reason they're not both?
Oh, the, the windows and the window and.
Yeah, the windows and the.
So, so if you go back to one other thing that's interesting, I'll, this is very, very preliminary, it's just kind of an idea at this point. So on that one-page summary that's color-coded, you'll notice that the only thing that is really summer of twenty-three that I've highlighted as planning is the windows at Ramona. So another piece of homework that I gave to, gave to Joe was and this, this idea came about is that our facilities director, um, Nicholas and SDR have all had prior projects where they've done window replacement, not during the summer, but during the school year. And they've done it, um, as has been indicated to me, sometimes there can be a discount or some savings because it's off your peak construction period. So one of the tasks that Joe and I talked about last week was that he would seek some feedback um, relating to window, from a window contractor and find out, get some direct feedback, you know, what kind of savings would you, would you likely bid? Um, if you'd had something that was off, off peak, so done in the fall. And then kind of to piggyback that, basically the way a project like that might work is that, and I've talked with um, Cindy about it, and she said this is something that they would be able to, to do, is you, the contractor goes in and they work on a classroom for about two days or one day, however long it takes them. The teacher and students, they, they get relocated to another classroom. You say you set up a classroom that's just kind of like the rotating classroom. People are displaced for one or two days. They come back, they have brand new windows, then they go to another room, another classroom, and you just kind of rotate through and it's windows. So it's not. Not, you know, it's not heavy banging or very loud. So the upside is, you know, potentially, we're talking about a project that's north of, you know, likely to be north of a million dollars. You know, what that percent savings is, should that be feedback that we get, I think is certainly something that that is worth consideration. And then so then, as an idea of when that might occur, instead of summer twenty three, something that could potentially happen in the fall of twenty two. So that's just. Kind of an idea that's out there. We're still awaiting more feedback.
So. On the projects, so the I like the way this is laid out over over time, we've. We've made several steps in color coding and and categorizing these things. And I think this is. By by far the the clearest that we've we've had so far. The projects category are are things that we have to do, right? I mean, the timing could be talked about a little bit, the extent of one or two of them could be talked about a little bit, but they're basically. To keep the buildings working and running, we have to do those. When we get to the other two categories and they're right now, there are any major construction. Though that's probably the first time I can remember in eight or nine years that we haven't had like a major building project. The large space air conditioning are is something that that we've had desires for, but are not. Like you must do this or or the building will fall apart. Given given that definition. It looks like there's a. An inflation bubble coming down the road. And from a budgeting standpoint, where we run into problems in our budget. Is the transition year or two as inflation is going up. Because we lock in costs. Based on inflation to a certain extent, but we don't get our revenue for another two years basically after that. So. From a historical standpoint, when inflation is going down, we actually gain some from that. When inflation is relatively stable, net net, but if inflation is rising, we do have a. Budget impact that that comes up. That we have very few discretionary items. And this is basically. The list of discretionary items that that if we have budget issues that we can come back to. Given that context and given that they're projects that we have to do. Would it make sense to consider doing some of those, the the projects, I guess, is the way they're called, the life safety things? Sooner so that that we do them. Potentially before inflation kicks in as much. And then gives us some options in years that inflation is going up that we maybe skip a discretionary thing for that year. While we couldn't skip roof, for instance, we might be able to skip some other. Discretionary items that that fall onto the list. Would it make sense to look at a couple of the, I mean, there's really only two or three big ones, but the. Ramona windows you talked about, potentially the WJHS. WJHS roof to pull those projects in a year or so. From a taking advantage of inflation. Anticipation. Or or should that be something that that you look at so that when we have this discussion? In more detail that that would be one of the the topics? Would that make sense for you to spend time on or?
Yeah, yeah, no, we can certainly. Look at that. The only reason I think from our perspective, the. The roof and the the unit vents at High Crest, we're still a couple summers out. Is just that. We know that they will need to be addressed in the near future. They're not at a point where we need to tackle them now. And so. Yeah, we're not that far off. I mean, I I was, we were talking about this last week about. You know, you know, I was specifically asking like, hey, does the WJHS roof or the unit vents? I mean, am I, do I need to push those to twenty two? Do I need to, you know, definitively have them in twenty three? And, you know, the answer is I consistently got is we had room. So if either one of those, we had to delay even, you know, further. I have, at least as of now, that wouldn't be an issue, but we know that they're just lifecycle wise that those those two big projects are are coming due. So I guess the only thing, you know, at least from my perspective, what I typically see. Is, you know, most people try to get as much out of roofs and unit vents as possible. Just knowing that even if we were proactive, it just starts the the clock on the next roof that's on WJHS. That's really kind of the. Kind of the counter bounce. I mean, to your point, yeah, I mean. Inflation, it's, you know, that's why I redid the thing and added four percent per year. And it's also why Joe's taking the extra step of relooking at every project under consideration. Just to see how they how they connect with current market conditions. So. Yeah, it's certainly something that we'll keep an eye on.
Okay, but that, I mean, look at it at the level that you think is appropriate. I mean, it is a. A consideration, not just from the fact that the prices go up. But we need to have some knobs that we can turn if we have a year where. Because of inflation, we have a hit to our reserves that that we really can't fill until the next rounds of levies come in. And this is really the only knobs that 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 aren't painful. So. Okay, so yeah, so on this topic, then, the concept is next month for us to. To really delve into the the trade offs. And and give at least a directional. Statements so that we can do stuff over the summer, think about how to how to do these things. Any other questions, comments from board members?
I guess circling back to my question earlier, I mean. So it would be helpful to have just a two sentence idea of how these are prioritized in terms of. The assessment for the needs. So like your example of the bathrooms at Harper, that's very compelling. Do we have a sense of are there other bathrooms like this? You know, how do we? How do we know what the all the needs are out there and what's potentially coming our way? And I ask this because I hear sometimes people saying, oh, when are the Ramona windows getting done? Or when? Are certain things that are important to them? And it would be helpful to me to know the process. By which they're all looked at and coming our way. But just briefly. That our facilities director, you know.
So I'm thinking maybe we can just put together some talking points so that you have that at the ready. And can use those as as you see fit.
So one thing we've. Done in other years and the only reason I even hesitate a tiny bit to ask is because of COVID gets complicated. Especially for new board members. They had like a tour of the buildings because I know you tend to to know your grade school. And it even wraps off with with HMS and WJHS, even if you have a kid there, but. To to have a a tour of the buildings where things can be pointed out. And and not even on the list, but just like, you know, here's something that, you know, somewhere down the line. Is a deficiency or, you know, this, it gives a better framework. And I know it's been. Well, it's been six years since I've done that. So with. With the COVID restrictions, whatever. If. Would it be possible to have a a tour, you know? We can work around times a day, whatever of, you know, like. Two board members at a time is the limitation, obviously, but. Could we set something like that up?
We could. Timing wise, it would be easier if we waited until students were dismissed to the summer. And so if that timing works well for board members, we could certainly set up those tours in June and July.
Good. Yeah, so I'd like the. Be involved with that. Yeah, summer makes sense.
If we're going to be talking about like the McKenzie classrooms versus gym. I would like to know what Dana thinks. She doesn't necessarily have to come to the meeting, but I just would like to know. I mean, because I mean, one seems better to me, but that's that's her wheelhouse. So.
Pretty confident most principals and educators would say that doing the classrooms, if all things were equal, would be the favorable choice.
That's what I thought, but I just, you know, if we're deciding, I would like her input. So.
Fair enough, yes. And regarding tours, we could tour more than two members at a time if we posted it as a special meeting and and made it available. So. I'm just thinking about the time efficiency for our staff to provide those tours.
Okay, yeah, because I'm sure there's more than two people that would be interested. So that would that would work too. All right. So yeah, that's what I figured it would be. The summer would work the best, but I wanted to kind of tee it up as. Something that. That makes sense. I know the new members, some of these things we're talking about, these just don't have any frame of reference for, or at least I didn't when I when I joined. I saw some some buildings that it's like, oh, well, that's what that looks like. So it gives a better context for when we're discussing things in the future. Okay.
And then the other thing that I would just highlight for board members, new and more veteran, is we we do have those health, life, safety studies that. Happen on a regular cycle and are required to happen. And so that's what really queues up those projects. While we have a lot of expertise in our buildings and in our director of buildings and grounds. That actually is what queues up a lot of those more significant needs. So. We will get some talking points and we'll look to get some tours set up this summer.
But that that does bring up, there's. Historically, there's been some funding for life safety things and there's always timing of when we have to do things in order to. I I just assume that this budget optimizes the use of that money. So I that. We don't have to talk about it if it does that, but. Any other any other questions on that before we move on to, you have one more item in utilities?
Okay. Two more, I think.
Well, well, we move on to one more and then we move on.
Okay.
Okay. Park District again, I assume. Oh, sorry.
Joe Colby.
Oh, yes.
Sandra. You guys are dismissed.
Thanks so much for all of your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a great rest of the day.
Thanks for spending the morning with us.
Bye.
Bye bye. Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
All right. So now we can talk about another type of bathroom.
Yes. Yes, and I will kick this off. And we're really just looking for feedback from the board on behalf of the Park District. The Willmet Park District has requested the board's consideration of an intergovernmental agreement. That would essentially grant access to the exterior bathroom at WJHS. This is a bathroom that is at the back of the building, has an exterior entrance only, faces the blacktop. And so the idea is that right now that bathroom isn't really in use at all. It would need pretty significant renovations to be ADA accessible and useful to anyone. The Park District is proposing that they would like to make those improvements to the bathroom in exchange for being provided access to the bathroom. After school hours in the summertime, as the board is aware and probably most of our community too. They have done some significant work on the play fields and are now considering installation of a bathroom in somewhere in the play fields area. And so. One of the ideas that was brought forward is gaining access to that bathroom with some improvements may help them to decide. Where and how to install that bathroom, if at all. And so right now they're looking for some feedback on their proposed idea of of that IGA. The board has been given a very preliminary draft copy of that for a review. And at this point, we're really just looking for some feedback, if you have any, on the IGA. As a just kind of high level overview. District thirty nine would grant access to the washrooms. The Park District would take responsibility for upgrades, upkeep, security and utilities. There would be some restricted hours of use of the bathroom. We we, for safety and security reasons, can't have patrons coming close to the school during school hours, but after school hours and in weekends, summertime. We don't have this, we don't have concerns there. So we would have some restricted timeframes there, but otherwise the Park District would have access to that bathroom. As I shared, the Park District has indicated that it will. Them gaining access to that bathroom and investing in the improvements there may have an impact on whether or not they build a standalone bathroom or. Possibly at least where they locate that standing standalone bathroom. So again, just looking for some feedback. If anyone has it, you can provide it now or. Reach out to me otherwise.
As one of those families who's been using the ball fields for what feels like a decade or more. This is a great idea, a great service to the community. And I think to the extent we can make this happen, it would be a great service. For everyone who uses that ball field. I think one bathroom might be a challenge in terms of keeping it clean, but it's a start.
I my, I agree with Lisa, but my my reservations are based on. The state of public bathrooms in general. I'm thinking about other park district maintained bathrooms and and have not been impressed with. Cleanliness, oversight, that kind of thing. And and I think about our standards. Which are ridiculously high.
They should be.
As they should be. So I worry about the details, you know, the security details, confusion, you know, I mean, since when are about public bathrooms closed? You know, during school hours, I think that's something that's not going to be intuitive to people. So I think I think there are issues in the details. Also, concerned about. What the neighbors want? So is there going to be a commitment for the Park District to build bathrooms? Or are they going to rely on the one that's already built? I've not been to any meetings about whether or not the Park District is going to have bathrooms and what the feedback's going to be.
I think my sense is that there has been a lot of discussion at the Park District Board regarding this topic. And the neighbors are intensely involved in weighing in on that project as well. And the Park District, from what I can tell, is. Being thoughtful in their consideration of that feedback. I think access to an existing bathroom is. Seen as an advantage. Over a standalone bathroom. I'm not sure the Park District, you know, I don't know where their decision making would go. It seems to me like this would be in addition to a standalone bathroom. But may help them to have some flexibility in where they place that standalone bathroom, if granted this access. That said, I think there's several decision points along this journey. And the first for them is whether or not they can even. Contemplate access to our bathroom. And if they can, then that may. Trigger some of their other decisions or or guide some of their other decisions. So at this point, that really is the feedback that they need. Unfortunately, some of those other details that you mentioned are would be outside of our control.
And.
I would just reiterate, I I feel like Lisa does. Being a good partner and seeing that it could be a real benefit to the community and. If it's there and not being used and they're willing to take on those things and commit to. Opening and closing and cleaning appropriately, I'd be strongly in support and want to make sure we're hopeful in our timing. In whatever way that needs to be for their timing.
So so the, I guess, the three things. One, I think if we can help the community, obviously, those fields need access. So that's good. On the cleanliness side, that's always a concern, I think, with a public bathroom. And maybe we can put in some. Clause that if we feel that it's not. Clean, that we. We clean it and build them or something like that, that that there's a requirement for the cleanliness. And if they don't maintain it themselves, then. Then we have some ability to. And if they don't maintain it themselves, then then we have some ability to to keep it at the level that we think is appropriate for something on the school district, something to consider. My biggest issue on this, and I think it's addressable, but is safety. You know, just the concept of a public bathroom on our school grounds. So whatever that means in terms of it's locked at a certain time, I'm sure that's part of it. But whether there's a security camera or whatever, I just, again, we live in a great community and we normally don't think about these things, but, you know, I watch crime shows on TV. And, you know, there's a lot of things that we don't want to happen on school grounds that happens in in and around bathrooms. And we'd want to make sure that this doesn't open up a door that literally that wouldn't be there otherwise.
I have a couple of questions. One of them is, like, I'm just looking at the, in terms of the agreement, like, first of all, like, how how many years is the agreement? Is this like a five year thing or a 10 year or an annual thing? And also, is it contemplated that the bathroom would be open during sports events, like, you know, like soccer Saturday? Or is it a 24 hour thing, like as soon as school is out for the day, that it would then be open, I don't know, by key or by, you know, like keypad or something like that, and then available through like 24 seven, like over the weekend?
The, in terms of the timeline, I think that is contemplated on page five of the draft agreement. I think they are looking for some kind of a lengthier commitment because there's an investment in the upgrades that they will need to make. And so one of the things that were added into this agreement post our our first conversation is that year of termination in in how those costs would be contemplated there. So it would not be an agreement that would be reviewed or approved every year. It would be an extended agreement. For those who are a little newer to the board, intergovernmental agreements happen that way. We have a, we already have an existing intergovernmental agreement with the Park District related to the Learning Commons at WJHS, that space that was gifted, so to speak, to the district for use in as a school building. And in exchange, they have used to access our gyms in the summer program space that that they access on a consistent basis. So an intergovernmental agreement is something that is somewhat common, but always entered into with a really close eye on making sure we're addressing the mission of both organizations and best serving the community. The open access is a really good question, and that may need some additional details built into the agreement.
Any like time lock or anything that that it, you know, locks it when the park closes? Because, I mean, certainly we wouldn't want, I mean, ideally, we wouldn't want it open after the park is closed.
In our, in our early conversations, we did discuss time locks. We also talked about security cameras and the oversight of those security cameras being the responsibility of the Park District. So not into our feed, but into their feed. That for us is important, just again, we're kind of monitoring our capacity for maintaining an additional space. We don't have staff working in the same hours that they have staff working. And so some of that needs to be paid attention to. They would contemplate a some kind of a key lock and a timed lock. The question that I'm hearing is, would it be publicly available or only on special events when the parks, the fields are being used for for a specific game? And and I think the Park District is is considering a more public access availability. When the parks are open, the bathroom would be open as long as school is not in session. But that's something that we can certainly clarify.
Any other questions on this topic? Okay, and and now one more.
Just to wrap up, then, I want to make sure that I'm giving the Park District the feedback that they are seeking. It sounds to me like the board is in favor of considering this agreement. There are some nuances you'd like to see folded into the agreement. I don't want to misspeak if there's any hesitation on indicating that the board is willing to consider this agreement.
Be a lot of nod, so you can take that assumption.
Great, thank you. All right, and then the final exciting topic of this very lengthy Facility Development Committee meeting is the Ramona Playground Donation Agreement. The board will remember that we spent quite a bit of time talking about this over the last at least 24 months, maybe even longer than that. And so we're at a really exciting point. I'll let Corey talk just briefly about that, and we'll we'll see some fun images.
Yeah, so the the board, as part of the fundraising process at Ramona, the the board had committed to contribute $30,000 to the project if Ramona could meet their fundraising goals. They have, they've gone through the process of selecting the type of playground equipment they want, and they've signed the contracts. So before, what we need from the board is to formalize the donation process with the PTA. So what I've got here is just some renderings of what the playground equipment will look like when it's done. There's another angle of the same stuff. And then this one is across the path. One thing that is worth noting, the existing, I guess, the the set of swings that they have at Ramona is pretty popular. So that is the one piece that will be staying. So I think the overall footprint of the playground is getting a little bit bigger compared to what it is right now. But in the conversations that I had with Cindy and some of the PTA leadership, they are super excited that they met their goal, and they are really looking forward to getting this project going. This would, this is something that would start after school is out this summer, and then it would be done well before, well before school starts back. So.
I think this is great, that, like you said, it's been a year, two years. A lot of energy went into Ramona being then the community to support this. So it's nice to see that it's it's reaching a point of reality. Just as a quick update to those of us that don't have complete memory and the board members, what is our current board philosophy, I guess, would related to our playgrounds?
So generally speaking, there's some health and life safety upgrades that need to be made to playgrounds. Those are the board's responsibility. Beyond that, if there, if the PTAs wish to see enhancements made to the playgrounds beyond things that are safety needs, the the PTAs have been very generous in fundraising to support those efforts. So we have spent some time talking about, do we need to have a timeline of playground replacement? Yes, that that does make some sense. However, what we find is most often the PTAs are eager to replace the playgrounds before there is actually end of life replacement needs. So it's the board's responsibility to do the end of life replacement needs. However, what we have found is our PTAs have been incredibly generous and want to see those replaced on a more, a quicker timeline. And so when that occurs, they partner with us if they are able to make a donation and the board is willing to accept it. Once that donation is accepted, the responsibility for maintenance of the project and ongoing health and safety kinds of improvements become the board's responsibility.
Right, and and I think we spend a lot of time to to reach that point. I think it's a, it's a good point. We have a responsibility. We don't want to to get into the habit of spending more on that than is appropriate, but we want to make sure that it's maintained. And we also need to take into account that different school districts, schools have different access to resources, and we want to make sure that that doesn't disadvantage one group too much over another. So I think we reached a really good point with this, and I know Ramona, as a school district, is really excited about this, and I think as a board, we should be also.
So the next step then will be for the board to be presented with an agreement to accept this donation at the upcoming board meeting officially.
Any other facility items for this month? Twenty one, building flights? All right. Madam President.
Well, thank you. That was a lengthy first first meeting. Thank you. So I'll turn it over to SFC Chair John, if you're ready.
Thank you, President Haley. I suggest we take a bathroom break.
Always in favor.
Always in favor.
Let's do it. We'll come back and regroup.
So should we go? I think that so we're going to first talk about special education transportation services contract extension, and I'm going to turn this over to Corey to explain why these costs are going down.
Your first day at the job and costs are going down, it's a good trend.
Yeah, it's not me.
I find that interesting. That's where you gravitated towards.
I couldn't help it.
So anyway, so for for background information, the way transportation service agreements work when you outsource in Illinois is when you bid, it's typically three years. For special or trustful special ed transportation services agreement with North Shore, the current school year is the third year of our our previous bid. One of the things that's allowed by school code is that we have the option to extend for up to two years. So you basically can get five years out of each bid. And so that's where we find ourselves with the with the special ed contract. I have a whole bunch of information on this one page document, but I just wanted to kind of share where we're at. The last bid, the last two years of that contract saw 3% increases each year. The next section, I've, just for more of a reference point, 18 and 19 being pre-COVID years, gives you a little bit of an idea of what the actual expenditures were for the special ed. The one thing to keep in consideration for like special ed transportation expenditures, maybe different than regular ed, is that it's not, you're not always going to see within school districts, this nice linear rise of a couple percent per year. It's going to be entirely dependent upon your student population and what what is what is required. And so in any given year, it's certainly possible to see a few hundred thousand dollar increase. You could also see a decrease. So I like to have those 18, 19 years as a reference of like, what does a, what does a normal year kind of look like expenditure wise? Obviously, the district saves some money in '20 near the end, and then this year, so far, we've we've only paid for actual services. And so days that our in-house students were out, those routes weren't needed, we didn't pay. And then I think even more so than us, some of the outplaced facilities that we send students to, I think they were, from what I've heard, were closed a little bit more than what we were during the school year. And so in those days when we weren't, we weren't paying for them either. So so for this year, at least in this particular budget line, I didn't really able to save a a good amount of money. So where we're at, as far as the proposed contract extension, is two years, 3.3% increases for both years. I do want to just offer up a little bit of context and some considerations that play into how we might come to a percentage increase. So as it relates to bus drivers, there is most definitely a shortage. There were shortages before the pandemic. The district I previously worked at, we ripped up a collective bargaining agreement halfway through a four year deal because we needed to pay our bus drivers more. So otherwise, we wouldn't have been able to service all of our students. So I know it's not just here, it's throughout the state, it's in other states, it's a, it's a big thing. So to combat that, and North Shore being proactive, they have increased their driver this week, very recently, driver pay by two, two bucks an hour, which equates to an 11.1% increase. In my conversations with them, depending upon market conditions and how well they're able to attract drivers and meet the needs of their contracts, they may even need to go higher. You know, there's just a lot of people that have kind of tapped out from, decided not to come back. What you typically seen is the bus driving population is a little bit older than some of your other functional areas of employees. And so it, you know, with 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 the way COVID has impacted people, that's not surprising. So it has been a challenge for not only North Shore, but everybody, whether you outsource or provide transportation in house. Another thing is, and this is not just them, but is really liability insurance in general, they saw a 13% increase effective this summer. And then continuing with the path of, you know, pandemic hitting, hitting their their finances particularly hard over the last year, plus they have communicated they will be reducing the amount of new bus purchases that compared to a normal year. Typically, what they, what they've communicated they like to do is a strategy that I think a lot of school districts employ is get buses that are coming off one, two year leases, get to save a good amount of money, but still get a really good bus. One thing that is interesting in our three year deal that is expiring is there's a provision in there related to the age requirements of the bus. So when we put out the bid documents three years ago, we had specified, and it made its way into the contract, that the average age of the bus fleet needs to be five years or newer, and no bus can be 10 years or older. And talking with our legal counsel about what they had sent me and just getting their thoughts on everything, that was a point that I late last week was asking North Shore to provide information. And as of this morning, I haven't got it, but they assured me I would get it this week of how that might impact the average age of their fleet. Just from my own perspective, I don't know that, you know, having an average age of a a bus fleet that is, you know, 5.5 versus 4.5 is necessarily terrible. But what a provision like this does hit at is the reliability component. I mean, that's what we're paying for, we're outsourcing. We expect those buses to show up every day on time, morning and afternoon. And obviously, if you start to get buses north of 10 years old, that's where you can start to see maintenance issues and and certainly service issue, which is the part that we care about. So that's really where that clause would have originated from. So really, then, the other things I want to point out that are a little bit different that they are requesting is so in March of, in the spring of '20, the board you know, had agreed to pay for some days where everybody was closed with the idea that we might return quickly. Luckily, this year, we have not had to go through that. They are requesting now that a clause be in the contract where we have the option to either pay them 80% of normal routes, and then they would keep their employees on the payroll, and they would provide documentation to us that they have continued to do so, or at our choice, we would pay 37% of the daily amount of routes normally run. But in that scenario, they would have the ability to furlough their employees. This is really for scenarios in which we would be closed or in remote learning for more than one week. And then an additional request that they had was to have a minimum amount of days compensated for in their contract. The original request was 175, the current request is 155. So that's kind of what they had requested, at least as my initial thoughts. If you've seen how our year has gone, I think, and I spin it forward to next year as it relates to a potential clause like this, the one thing I think about is we may have specific classrooms or parts of a school that may be out, but it's hard to envision a lot of time, especially with vaccination becoming more and more available to younger ages. You know, if you have one or two classrooms or even say five in a building, you're still running the same routes because the kids are spread across multiple classrooms. So clearly, what you can see is the bus company is trying to shift some of the risks back to school districts. As I think about it, yes, they are doing that, and there's certainly some risk there. But as I think about our own operations, I think it's probably less risk on our part in in pursuing or being okay with a clause like this. in, in pursuing or being okay with a clause like this than maybe some of the other, uh, school districts in the, in the state. So that's where we're at. Um, if I can get the final language worked out, we would potentially have, uh, this up for a board vote at either the May board meeting or the June board meeting if we can't get the language ironed out by then. With that, if there's any comments, questions?
Questions, I think, all right.
Just refresh my memory. This is the special education transportation. So does that both the category of, of kids that need this bus that come to our schools as well as the kids that go to, very few that go to outsourced?
It's a, it's a combination of them.
Right.
And approximately how many, uh, kids ride these buses?
Question.
How many buses? I, I, I don't really need an exact answer. I'm just trying to get a feel.
Well, I know that the total number of, kind of tend to think of it in number of drivers, which mirrors routes. But like on the regular ed side, this year, we're operating fourteen and normally we'd have fifteen. Um, and on the special ed side, I know the range has usually been just below ten or sometimes maybe just over ten, the total number of drivers needed. So that would be routes. And there's a different, there's different, um, types of vehicles and stuff like that. Sometimes it's, you know, a traditional special ed bus, and there's different types of buses that meet different needs. So.
That, that's fine. Just wanted that for background. Eventually, when we talk about the big bus contracts, that's always one of my favorite topics for, uh, for a lot of reasons, but this is an obvious, uh, need. So.
So Corey, just a quick question. What exactly are you asking for today? Like, is, we're, we're obviously not voting because it's committee of the whole, but you're just saying, are we font? You're getting, you want us to give you the green light on these contract considerations and the increase? I just don't understand what you need from us today.
Yeah. So really what we're looking for is to, A, first thing is to update the board on this. And two, um, yes, just a little bit of a, of, of a little bit of a blessing in that I don't bring back a final contract, especially some of the newer provisions and things that, um, the board were to find, you know, to be objectionable. Um, that's really kind of what we're looking for.
Mark me down as a blessing.
So, but I think you're saying you're okay with this pandemic-related provision. Do you think it's reasonable?
Yeah. Yeah. Cause I, though, I guess the way I look at it is as we negotiated this, it's something that they're pushing to get into all their contracts. I, I look at it through two lenses. One is ours, what is the likelihood that knowing how we have operated compared to other school districts? And then two, thinking about it, um, you know, from, from their perspective, you know, if we were to say hard nose on some of these things, to me, then if I'm on their side, the natural inclination, the natural thought is, okay, three point three is not enough, right? And while there has not been a specific, hey, it's this or that, or these are the number, you know, I think that's where something like this is, I think contracts are going with, with bus companies down the road is kind of, you know, what level of risk are we willing to assume impacts how much we're willing to pay?
So do you think in that, I guess my only thought on that provision is, does it directly relate to the employment of the drivers?
So that's one of the things I kind of do like about the pandemic-related clause is that, at least the way it's worded, is it gives us the option. And so we get to, we would get to decide, and as each situation came up, we would have a good idea of where we thought things were going. And then we could make the decision to either pay eighty percent of the normal cost, they keep their drivers, bus aides, mechanics employed, or we pay thirty-seven percent, which represents roughly what their fixed costs are. And then they, they have the option to furlough, which almost assuredly they would likely do that. So that's kind of one of the things that does give us a little flexibility of like, we can pick. And currently, one of the, so we get about seventy-five percent of our special ed costs reimbursed by the state the following year. And for last school year and the current school year, the state has said that they would cover any payments to service providers for like days where you're remote learning, um, to keep them in business. Will they do that in future years? I don't know, but that's certainly something the state has done now. It's consideration.
Yeah, I mean, oh, sorry. I was gonna, I was trying to recollect when the pandemic started rolling out last year. We were concerned about the bus drivers, and I think we insisted we were gonna pay them. I just, I can't remember what happened there.
So what I, what I remember recall happened from last year was the district paid a higher amount, presumably about the eighty percent to keep the drivers employed, I think through the end of April. So it was like, it was figured out, you know, per day. And then from like May to June, I think the district paid a lower amount, which I think, you know, the big difference between the scenarios. And the same thing, you know, when I was at a different job is that, you know, early on, people thought like, hey, it's gonna be a few weeks or a month, we'll be back. And then I think by the time you get to like, I think it was late April, I think we start to get a sense like, okay, the governor's gonna keep his order in place and we're gonna have no school for the rest of that school year. So that was kind of the difference. So there was a, it was a little bit of a mix.
Uh, I think Amy might have had her.
Well, I, so I just, I, I also am leaning towards the green light toward, in this direction. Just wondering, are you imagining these are the same terms that will come to be for our general bus contract?
Would we expect this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is this precedent setting? Just curious.
Yeah, the one thing that's, um, interesting that our legal counsel pointed out that you see a little bit of a difference between extensions versus like the bids. And so our regular transportation, um, next school year will be the fifth of a five, of the five year. And so we would be looking at, you know, bidding it out then. And our legal counsel has pointed out that historically, when you do bids, like school districts have a lot of control in dictating the terms, like this is what is going to be there. You bid a price based upon what we dictate. Well, now, and typically when you would see two years' extensions, pre-pandemic, people just roll over, there's nothing to think about. Well, now we've had a dynamic change in a major way, and you see these service providers trying to, you know, cause it's more of a negotiation for these couple of years, trying to change a little bit. So I, what I'm curious to see is how does that play next year when we do like regular ed? So I certainly think if they have any say, they would.
Frank, you gotta comment.
Yeah, the, the, we've, it, there are, there are differences between this bus contract and the, the normal one because this one's paid through other sources, um, or more of it's paid through other sources. When, when we do our bus contract, I always like to remind people, it's a third paid for by federal, third paid for by, by tickets, by, by the riders, and a third paid for out of our general budget. Um, it's not paid for by the riders. Um, it's not paid for by federal. This is a little bit different case, but as Amy pointed out, it does set a precedent. So from that standpoint, the, the only other thing is I'm, I'm really, really hoping that next year we don't have bus things related to pandemic. But as long as that clause is gonna be in there, can it be generalized to natural disasters and pandemics or pandemics and natural? I, I mean, I can think of things, but frankly, two years ago, I wouldn't have thought of a pandemic either. And, you know, if there's a earthquake or tornado or something like that, I mean, as long as we're bothering to put this clause in, can you generalize it just a little bit more?
All right. Thanks, Frank. Anyone else? Okay. I, I think we're good. Uh, do you have what you need, Corey?
I do. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, back to you, Corey. To talk about the budget draft.
Last item, I promise. Okay, so, so as I think about the twenty, twenty-two, um, budget process, I think of it in a similar kind of lens as the facilities. You know, this month, we're reviewing kind of our first look, first draft of the budget. We'll get feedback, come back in, in June, we'll have a tentative, um, budget presentation again. At the June board meeting, the board approves a tentative budget, and then it goes on display to the public. And then the board approves the public hearing for August. In August, we would review the budget and any changes that have occurred since June. Given what's going on, I suspect that we would have a higher nor, uh, number of changes than normal, than maybe a normal year. August twenty-third board meeting, we would hold a public hearing on the budget, and then the board would vote to approve the budget. And then by the end of September, we would, the administration would file the, the board-approved budget with several state agencies. And we would be on our way. So the first graph that I wanted to share with everybody is a look at our operating revenue by source. I think this is just a really good graphic that reminds us of kind of our, how our district is funded. When you combine the property taxes and the other local revenue, which is a lot of fees paid for a variety of issues or variety of things, plus tuition, you're looking at ninety-two percent of the funding for our operations locally. So let's talk about those local revenue streams. Property taxes, as it relates to this budget, um, the tax levy that was approved last, last fall is the one that directly impacts this year's budget. We're looking at fourteen point two million of new growth is what's been budgeted in there. And we've set the collection rate for property taxes at ninety-eight percent. For a reference point, each point two five percent collected is about a hundred and forty-five thousand. And when I look back, um, over probably a twelve, thirteen-year period, the lowest collection rate for any one fiscal year is ninety-seven point six five. This year, we're trending to have a collection rate of just over ninety-eight percent. Interest revenue, um, an area that's taken a big hit, uh, the last year plus. We've budgeted this as a combination of the known CD investments that we currently have. Plus, in talking with PMA, gave us a figure of, uh, basically ten basis points or point one percent for remaining balances. Then I just included kind of a couple of references. The fiscal year twenty was an actual amount, so we were up near a million dollars of interest revenue before, the pandemic and, and interest rates really, really tanking. Corporate personal property replacement taxes is another big line item at a little over four hundred thousand dollars a year. We try to mirror our budget to the Illinois Department of Revenue estimate that gets released in June or July. So we'll have that updated, um, later this summer. And then another new thing that for, for this upcoming year, at least as far as the size of it, is the keep thirty-nine tuition. So what I wanted to do was just kind of update people where we're at. The December five-year budget or projections had a budget of one point six million dollars. And I've, I've adjusted that down, at least temporarily, and I'll adjust that throughout the summer as we continue to get updated enrollment information. But the one point four million represents pretty closely to where we're at now. As you can see, I've listed out the, as of the end of April, the keep enrollment by elementary building and then the total number of kindergarten registrations. The one thing that I think that my first glance is that, you know, at each building, you have a very large percentage of families opting for the full-day program, so which I think bodes very well. To get to, to get to where we had in our projections of one point six million, you'd probably need about five or six students at each building to sign up. And from what I've heard from principals historically is that, um, kinder, at the kindergarten grade, that tends to trickle in over the spring and summer months. Lunch fees, we've set at five hundred and seventy-eight, um, which is a slight increase over last year. And then pre-COVID was one point three million. Transportation fees was, uh, they set at three hundred thousand, pre-COVID was about six hundred thousand. You know, this particular line item is honestly gonna be dependent upon how many students we're allowed to have on a bus, what kind of decisions we make in that area for, for next summer. So I expect this will be something that I will update to match our operational decisions for, for the August meeting. And for reference, we only have been doing one student per bench on the bus, with the exception being siblings. State and federal aid. For all the state aid, I've kept them flat, and we typically will update those amounts once the state passes a budget for the next fiscal year. And then same thing on the, on the federal level for the existing grants. The one things that are new that we've talked a little bit about is the second and third rounds of the ESR funding. I will adjust this, you know, we've, Dr. Kremisboli has talked about letting our strategic planning process kind of inform how we spend the, spend this money. Tentatively, I've got all of ESR two and a third of ESR three in this year's budget. Depending upon how we decide to proceed with that, I will adjust the figures accordingly, um, for August. But you're looking at a little over half a million dollars of additional funding for this year. Now for the operating expenditures. Similar story to the revenue side where a couple of items kind of dominate, dominate the whole, the whole puzzle. When you add up the cost of all of our employees, we're a little over eighty percent at eighty-two. So what was incorporated in formulating this budget? So on the expenditure side, a lot of it is mirrors the assumptions that we use in our five-year planning for salaries and staffing. You know, we've based upon what is in collective bargaining agreements, what has been board-approved, what do we typically do? Any things that are not definitively known for next year will be updated for August. Staffing, as always, is driven by enrollment. You know, staffing that's been in there, that was put in there, assumes a return, return to normal class sizes. However, knowing that we just really don't know what next year is gonna look like, what I've done is I've put a placeholder for extras, uh, COVID-related staffing, similar to the levels that we had in for this school year. As we finalize plans and hopefully get clear, clearer guidance from state and federal authorities, we will adjust this for the August presentation of the budget. Medical and dental insurance, um, we had assumed five percent for medical and dental. Our renewals for HMO came in at three point three and PPO and the high deductible at three point nine. Many of you may recall that as a part of joining Co-op ninety, we had to contribute some additional money each year to build up our reserves within the co-op. For fiscal year twenty-two, I've been given an estimate of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars is our last of these payments. Two twenty is very similar to the, uh, payment we made this past fall. Dental insurance is seeing no increase on the, on the monthly premiums. And then there's a reserve payment of fifteen thousand, and that's the second of three payments. I M R F rate, here's a bit of positive news. So each year, um, I M R F will, actuaries will go through and they look at the experience of each individual employer. So they're looking at D thirty-nine employees and retirees only as they try to calculate what should our employer rate be? And so each year in the spring, we get a preliminary rate. The good news is our preliminary rate dropped down to six point five nine percent, which for this current, for, uh, twenty twenty-one, it's eight point three percent. And so the one thing is, even though it's preliminary, it doesn't get finalized until about November. And so the one thing is even though it's preliminary, it doesn't get finalized until about November. In my experience and in talking with many other districts and municipalities, I don't know of anyone who's ever had their preliminary rate change to their final rate, so it's always been the same. So fingers crossed, that's, that's really good news because when you talk about IMRF runs on a calendar year, we run on a July 1st to June 30th year. The net blended rate drops about 1% for us and that equates to about $80,000 in actual savings based upon IMRF eligible salaries. Purchase service and supplies, school-based allocations were increased by 2%. Department budgets and line items were increased by 2%. There's a few exceptions to this rule where certain things that are kind of outside of our control typically go above 2%. A big one is, you know, our liability and workers comp, we're going to budget what we know that's going to be. Technology is an area in curriculum or areas that tend to have uneven replacement cycles. And so you might, you could see something that goes up or down by more than just your typical 2%. I will say that the budgets for each of those mirror what we're doing, especially on the technology side. What's in that budget mirrors what we've been doing as far as iPads and laptops for another types of technology. Food service supplies, currently the budget's much lower, similar to how the revenue component was much lower. As we get an idea of what lunch might look like for next year, we will certainly adjust that. COVID placeholders. So I wanted to have one slide that kind of just addressed COVID placeholders only. When you add up all these, this is about 1.9, a little over 1.9 million dollars. So I've got this in the draft budget. And I think as we think back, you know, certainly we'll probably feel more confident this coming August than we did last August. What does that mean cost-wise? We don't really know yet. I mean, I think a reasonable expectation is that the cost, the extra cost will be somewhere between what we started with last year and zero. I don't think it's going to be like, I don't think we're at a point where we can plan for zero. So from my perspective, I wanted to put all those costs in there. As we start to identify our operational changes for next year, I would start to then peel back some of these costs as they're no longer needed. And we will certainly detail those out for the board at the August meeting. And kind of, I'm sure we'll have many updates on how things are going before then. So, but I wanted to point that out because it is a, it is a substantial amount of money. Capital projects, this is just a copy of the final slide from earlier. Budget for fiscal year 22 is really just a combination of those projects from last summer. From this summer and for next summer. That's always going to be that way. Debt service and transfers, the debt service fund is just two payments. Now it's the combination of the debt service, debt certificates, which is paid from operating funds. It's about $800,000 a year. And then the one outstanding bond issuance. And then as far as transfers, this is just kind of following accounting rules. We have to transfer 800,000 from O and M to debt service to cover the debt certificates and then to properly classify our capital project or construction expenditures in the capital projects fund. That fund does not have its own funding source, so it's coming from operating funds. Transfer from O and M. And then one other thing I want to point out, we're not quite there yet, but I'm keeping an eye on, there may be a possibility to need to transfer some money, a small amount of money from Ed Fund to O and M, just because we fund our capital projects through the O and M fund. And we, that is something that has occurred occasionally in the past. So operating fund summary, total revenues, 67.4 million. Expenditure, 65.9, gives us a surplus of 1.47. Then when we factor in that the transfers out of the operating funds to the other funds, you're looking at about 5.9 million, which then would put the operating funds as a little bit of a deficit due to the one-time projects. And then I'm, at this point, projecting that fiscal year 22 would enter the fund balance at 27.8 million or 42% of expenditures. This graph is one we've shown in the past, shows operating revenues versus expenditures. You have three years of actual data, fiscal year 21 is the current year, which is based upon budget and then fiscal year 22 based upon draft budget. And then our favorite fund balance graph, which shows what we'd be looking at over the next five years, also has five years of history. And the red lines indicate where we're trying to stay in between the 40 and 65% targets. And with this budget then kind of rolled forward, this is what we were able to do so. So I'll take questions. One thing I will pop up on the screen, just so we can take a quick look at kind of the summary page. Or I'd like to look at this when I'm looking at our operating funds. Alright, so this was the first page of the financial statements that were, financial information that was in the board packet. It has three years of actual data, current year budget that has been modified to where we think we're going to. And which is something we changed back in February. And then the draft budget for fiscal year 22, you see the 42%. So with that, and then behind that in the board packet, you have all the different pages for each of the individual funds. I don't want to go through each of them. The information is there if anybody has questions or either about this or any of the slides, we have to answer them.
I have two. Does anybody else have any questions? Yes?
I just think it would be helpful if Cory went over the idea of maintaining a certain level of fund balance for the new board members. Like, I feel like that's like a sacred cow we have.
Yep. Yeah, so the, for the new board members, so the reason the fund balance graph is so important or like is, it's always a good reminder.
Cory, can you bring that one up?
Sure. So the, the board target is to maintain a minimum of 40% and then have a high end of 65%. And so at least as from my perspective of why this is important, kind of hits on at least, I'm sure others can have different comments. But for mine is maintaining a 40%, it's still above the state. The state says you should have 25%. So we're doing even better at our low points than what the state recommends to get their highest rating in that category. Also on the low point, it allows us to tackle anything, you know, 40% is where we want to be. But if something really bad that we need to address, we do have money to tackle it. One of the things I noticed coming into this district, being my first year, is how the board administration was able to jump on certain things that maybe other districts didn't do last spring that were needed to open schools. And if you were a district that didn't have solid fund balances, you might not have made those decisions and instead waited for help from the state or federal level. So that's, that's kind of the low end. And then on the high end, once you get to see certain thresholds, kind of a, what is the plan to stop accumulating? And then is there something that we can address? And so one thing that is really obvious with this is you see that sharp drop in fund balance. Well, that coincides with a conscious decision to spend money on construction for the keep project and to do the second floor air conditioning at the junior high. So you can see the, you know, there's, there's a philosophy, a policy. You know, you see where we're at, have a conversation, implement it, and now we're down in, down into the 40s. So that is kind of the, been the approach. And barring other direction, that will continue to be.
Frank, did you want to say something?
Yeah, in 2020, wasn't there also a bond?
Yes.
Issue, do you want to bring that up too?
Yeah, there was new money issued. It was a, I believe a refunding and a, and new money. So it was a combination of that. And then overlaid with that with, you know, we talked about the projects. As it relates to fund balance, you know, the board has a process of every few years. You know, there's debt certificates that, you know, can be issued every so many years. And then there's other money, if there's projects and a need to do so, that all kind of plays into the fund balance.
Yeah, if I could add, so thank you. Good question. X presentates. I got used to that. One of the things that's like, was shocking to me when I got on the board was seeing $40 million sitting in $250,000 zero interest accounts of taxpayer money. So, so I think that's from my perspective, one of the reasons that we chose to spend it on something useful. So something to keep in mind. It's, you know, we're accountable for, I think at, sitting at the fund balance it will be sitting at, we're talking about $25 million. So not too high, not too low. I think the goal, yeah, sorry Frank.
Yeah, it's just a couple of follow-up clarification things. The, the state has a number that if you blow below that number, your bond ratings and other things start coming into play. We, we also looked at the number related to cash flow. Because the funding from the state in particular comes in choppy. You know, some years we get three, then they try to make it up with five payments during the course of the year. Sometimes they do other things because of the state of Illinois and they, they have cash issues. But because of our cash flow, our costs come in fairly steady. So if the revenue comes in choppy and the costs come in fairly steady, you have to have a certain amount of working cash and not go below that, that level that the state says and the bond issuers say you shouldn't go below. And that, that's basically where the 40% number came in. It gives us room for covering those kind of cash flow issues without going below the numbers that, that have other long-term financial implications. So again, from 2020, there is, I think, three things really going into 2021. One, every periodically we issue due bonds based on our, our rate that we authorize, so we can fund bonds, it gets complicated. But basically every couple of years, we reissue a bond, so it gets choppy. That's why the 2020 number was a little bit higher. We had a lot of construction in 2021 and this morning we went through that going forward, we aren't going to be doing a lot of like classroom additions and some of these major expenditures. But we did do those in between 20 and 21. And if I heard right, the, the net COVID number, 1.9 million. The net money that, that may come in from federal bills is around a million. So that was another million dollar hit to our budget that we gladly did. But just, because it does look, you know, you're, you're kind of in the 60s and then we go into the 40s. I mean, I think there were those three things that, that really brought those things to our that caused that, that number to happen.
Thanks Frank. Okay, I had two questions. So one question is, I've noticed the state funding is trending down. Do we, do we, I mean, I think it's going to trend, keep trending down overall. That's my understanding, so curious about that.
I think the one thing to note in there that you see the trend down is our, so the two, the, the, the two big sources of state revenue for us is that special ed transpiration reimbursement and our evidence-based funding. So the evidence-based funding model is set up so that you're kind of a whole harmless, so I'm just making up a number. So say you got 3 million in one year, that's your new minimum, you never get less than 3 million. So that's not really the issue. What, what you're probably noticing is the last couple of years, we've had less expenditures in special ed. Well, then the following year, we're getting 75% of that lower amount back. And so I'm expecting, when I built that in here, I'm expecting a final special ed expenditures for the current school year to be even less than it was last fiscal year, which means we would drop down and that would. So then I would think that if we had a full year of normal transportation in fiscal year 22, then in 23, we would see a pump, a big jump, we should see a jump back up in state funding. That would be my expectation. We shall see.
Oh, that's helpful. Thank you. Okay, second question. So I know we, I think we, we do tax refunds out of the, the property taxes that we receive. So, so when someone goes out and they challenge the property taxes, you get to an ultimate level and it's up to, and, and they prevail, it's up to the governing units, right? So a school district is one of them, to refund the taxes back. And it's a fairly substantial expense for us. So I was curious if and where that's incorporated here.
Okay, so that, yep, so that is built into the net collection rate.
Oh, you net it.
Yeah, so I built that in there. So that's, you know, one of the big reasons, you know, how much are people paying? And then what's also the refunds plays into that net collection rate. But that is incorporated in there.
Okay.
And I'm hoping, I don't know if I have it for June, but certainly by August, I want to, as we start to think about property taxes in future years, is just like to have more year-by-year refund data. Not sure if, I have like one year, it's usually, I think fiscal year 20 is the one year I had the whole, the whole amount. It was like just under a million.
Yeah.
So it's, I mean, it's not, it's substantial.
Thank you. That's all I had. Anyone else? All right. Thank you Cory.
Yep, thank you.
Turn the meeting back to you.
Right, thank you so much. Okay, and I will turn it over to Lisa Schneider Fabes, strategy chair.
Thank you. So I just wanted to give a report about the strategic planning process, which I'm delighted to say is going very well under Katie's leadership. So the strategic planning team has completed four meetings, which considered of, consisted of an orientation meeting and then three data retreat meetings. And, you know, I know, given the level of detail provided, this was no small feat to gather and present in a clear and articulate way, all the data that was presented. And I know you all have access to the decks with all the data, should you have a desire to kind of read and review in prep for the SWOT analysis that's coming out. So I do recommend actually everybody look at it because it is very informative. So during these, during the orientation meeting, teams engaged in article discussions. So you got like homework and then we talked about anything from K-12 education trends to emotional and academic development, database problem-solving approaches. Kind of got all of our engines going. The first data retreat focused on perceptual data gathered from stakeholder groups. So kind of would you recommend D39 to your friends? Do I like my teachers? Kind of, you know, not data that was about performance per se, but about kind of how people feel. And that, so a summary of that data was presented and then the team spent the rest of the time kind of reflecting on what they thought about that, what did they observe? And then everybody's ideas were recorded. There's a lot of use of Google Docs, which is also in the folders that you can access to see what's going on. So I, like lots of transparency. The second data retreat focused on three data reports, working and learning environments, student achievement and growth, finance facility. finance facilities and technology. There was a ton of information, again, shared and people broke up into teams and recorded their impressions. During the third and final data retreat, the team had more time for review and discussion. Some folks reviewed the data again. And then we broke up into teams and kind of looked at a SWOT analysis, kind of what are the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats that we collectively identified? And then we would either confirm or add or say, ah, it's not my impression to kind of a straw man SWOT. The next step is we're going to ask the various stakeholder groups to provide feedback and input on the SWOT before we use that SWOT to set direction going forward. So there'll be feedback gathering in a couple ways. There's going to be a follow-up survey of all stakeholders. Dr. Kremis Goli is going to host some focus groups with staff and maybe students. And by the way, the students who are part of the team are awesome. And it's just so important to have student voice. So I commend the district for making sure we have that. We're going to have a community forum for parents and community members. And there'll be time, that'll be scheduled the week of May 17th, so that's coming up. In terms of your ability to participate, if you're not on the committee, you should attend one of these sessions and provide your input. And then we will also have kind of a special time during the board member, I mean, during the May board meeting to kind of reflect on the SWOT. Any questions, Frank?
What's the logistics to attend? Because I'm not sure I know how to do that. I think I've tried or thought about it, but I haven't succeeded.
For the eighteen?
Well, you said you should, the board members should think of attending one of these sessions. So what is?
So those were just announced on Friday. You received a note about, about the details being forthcoming. I think we're scheduled to communicate those out on Tuesday or Wednesday this week. And you can register either to participate in person or via the live stream if you wish. Again, that will be a summary of the work accomplished so far and a review of the SWOT analysis with an opportunity to respond. The same feedback can be provided via the survey. So a lot of people we know at this time of year may not be able to participate in person or even via live stream. Their feedback is just as valuable through the survey. So any one of those avenues will be appreciated feedback and will help to guide the team's next steps.
And again, to summarize, the board has a couple ways to play here. You can do the survey, you can go to the community forum, and then we will discuss it at the regular board meeting. And, and I do think, again, like the SWOT analysis is informed by the data that was presented at the data retreat. So in order to give the most meaningful feedback, you might want to go through those steps.
Related to that, and I know there's three, and I've read them all together, so I don't remember which ones which. But the, the slides on the, the data metrics are, it's a lot of the details that we cover over the course of the year all in one place. So especially for the new board members, but even for existing, I was going to say older, but I'd rather say existing, board members, I'd strongly encourage looking at that deck. I know it's material that we've seen, you know, monthly, but it's all in one place. And it's a good, it's a really good summary from that.
Did I miss anything? Perfect. Turn it over to you.
Okay, do we have more strategy items?
We do, in fact. Lisa, you probably should introduce me for a metrics update.
Whoops.
That's okay.
I'm having practice.
That's okay. There's actually three items that we wanted to update the board on related to reopening, well, in strategy. The first was the strategy core team update, so thank you. As, as is, has become customary, we give a quick metrics team update, and I'm happy to do so today. The team met on Friday to conduct their final Zoom meeting of the year, if you can believe that. This team has been meeting all first semester, met weekly. After transitioning through second semester, we pivoted to meeting every other week. And we now have held our last Zoom meeting and our transitioning to our final meeting of the year will be in person on May 21st. And we are eager to celebrate the accomplishment of this team. The team did spend some time, again, reviewing the dashboard and the full reports. I'll show those in just a minute. The metrics team discussed the ongoing importance of school mitigation efforts to maintain health and safe, healthy and safe learning environments. So mask wearing and distancing, thoughtful symptom monitoring, monitoring continues to be critically important to maintaining in-person instruction. I know that we're all feeling more and more comfortable and confident in the coming out of the pandemic. Yet we still have the need to mitigate risks in school if we're to keep our schools open and to limit classroom quarantines. And so we continue to emphasize that, staying home when you're sick, when you're experiencing symptoms. If you may have been exposed, all really, really important efforts. I will celebrate, and maybe this is the right time to show my screen here. Let me see if I can get everything up again. I started to say I will celebrate. So as a reminder, the top metrics dashboard is a summary of what we experienced over the week. That same information with detailed background is provided in the weekly reports. Again, those reports are a summary of what has transpired over the past week, a point in time moment of data. Down below, we have our more dynamic data that are reflected. These are updated several times throughout the week, typically three or four times because it takes some manual labor. It, it kind of depends on what's happening with the data and what's happening during the week. But typically, it's about every other day, these are updated. We see that test positivity rates continue to go down ever so slightly, especially within our local area. Those are cause for celebration. New cases per one hundred thousand also continues to go down again. Reasons for us to continue to feel more confident, yet the decline is also dependent on us continuing to be really safe in our mitigation effort. So we actually, as a, as a little celebration here, we went about ten days as a district without reporting a case. We did just have a case that we're processing this morning, so that's already reflected on here, reported late last night to us. These are also updated, again, regularly, about every other day, the, the cases within the district that are active. So as of yesterday afternoon, there were two cases in two classrooms that were on quarantine. This will be updated again tomorrow. We continue to process our safeguard data. And so we have just over a thousand samples out right now being processed, and those get processed this evening and will be communicated as needed there. So several, several causes for hope in, in looking forward. Yet the team really feels strongly that through the end of the school year, we need to continue to be safe in our mitigation efforts. We also know that the vaccine is, approval for our twelve to fifteen-year-olds is imminent. We continue to hear that it will happen any moment, and so we are ready to communicate that out as soon as that happens. We have developed with our Neutra Township partners through, throughout an opportunity to back, to offer the vaccine to our twelve to fifteen-year-olds as soon as that announcement is made. So we're really eager and very hopeful that people will take advantage of that. We know that in that first clinic, we won't be able to serve every student, but we will continue to offer the clinics as long as they are being readily accessed by everyone. So please look for that information to be forthcoming as soon as the approval occurs. And then we're starting to plan for the next school year and what mitigation efforts might need to be in place and what vaccination kind of expectations we might have, those, those considerations are, are being discussed at this point. So really, really proud of and thankful for the contributions of the metrics team throughout this year. We could not have done it without them, without their expertise and the various perspectives that came together to help guide our decisions. Those meetings were not always easy, but they certainly were productive and incredibly helpful. So we look forward to celebrating on the 21st.
So I'm assuming you covered C as well, in just saying that you're planning, or do you have more to say on?
No, in fact, we do want to share something specific with the board, and thank you. I will ask Kristen to give a quick update because we're looking at wanting to be proactive in communicating to our families about the options and at least the preliminary plans for the upcoming school year. Kristen?
So while we are finishing the school year, we are also starting to try and plan for next year. And one of the things that, that we're really looking at is having, we're planning on full in-person, a return to pre-pandemic school days, hours, all of that. But we do anticipate that there may be some students who may have qualifying medical conditions or it would make it really challenging for them to be back in school. So one of the things we're going to be doing shortly is sending out a, a survey to all of our remote families and just try to get a sense of, do, do we have students for whom coming back to school would not be a safe option or not? And then based on that, we'll, we'll be able to plan for them and try and figure out how that fits into all the rest of our planning.
Can I just ask what that would look like? What if the, the student who couldn't come back?
So we may, we have some students who may be recovering or within treatment for cancer right now for whom their immune systems are significantly compromised. And so being in the school might not be a safe place for them to be.
It is typical, though we don't spend a ton of time talking about it, even pre-pandemic, we had students who needed to be out of school for one reason or another. Typically, those students are receiving homebound or hospital services for their instruction. That is dictated and guided by the state of Illinois. It amounts to, for our homebound students or hospitalized students, about an hour of direct tutoring a day for the time that they're eligible for that. So one of the things that we're trying to consider right now is whether we have enough students to run some kind of a more fully remote program or if the homebound services are, are going to be sufficient to meet those students' needs, or maybe it's something in between. We're also discussing with some of the neighboring school districts if there is some benefit in pooling our resources in the student needs to gather students together. There are some logistics that would make that really complicated, but the first step in pursuing this is to be really clear with our families about the kind of programming that we intend to offer next year and then to learn about any students who may have difficulty accessing that programming so that we can start to plan for what options may need to be provided to them. We do expect the state of Illinois to come out with some regulations around this, much as they dictate homebound instruction. They likely will, excuse me, dictate these next steps. But we don't feel like we can wait for that. That may be late August that they come out with those directions. And so we're trying to anticipate, based on all the information we're provided, what might be required by the state and what might be necessary and best for our students, and then to plan around that. So we want to really clearly communicate to all families that a return to in-person instruction is the kind of expectation. That's what we're planning for. But there may be a few students who qualify medically for some exceptions to that. And so we want to carefully consider those.
Is the state looking at requiring vaccinations for the twelve and up?
We have not heard that yet. And we know that right now the vaccines are approved under emergency use authorization. We expect that EUA to be provided for the twelve to fifteen-year-olds. What we hear from our medical professionals is that until that is full clearance, it would be difficult to mandate vaccinations of youth. But it may be that, that full clearance may be coming sooner than later. Again, that's something that we'll need to be following, what happens medically and then what happens at the state level as well. And we do have some history there, right, of requiring a proof of vaccination. We do so for many of the other required youth vaccinations. And then there are some exceptions based on medical or religious objections. So we expect at some point that will come into play. I would be surprised if it is that well-defined and developed by August.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One, we have a definition of COVID of states. Just identify some of the cases, you know, if they're recovering from cancer or as an example. I, I assume there'll be a similar definition of, of state for this, and it won't be, you know, I chose to have my cows not be taught in school. But just if there's a, I'm not sure the right word, even a documented reason would be played out, it's hard to, for them to build that route.
Right. Right now, we're saying qualifying medical conditions, in that will need to be explored and probably will be clarified by the CDC and the IDPH as the summer months unfold and, and vaccines and current diseases starts to play out. So right now, we link to what the CDC has named as those qualifying conditions. But we expect those to continue to be clarified over the next several months.
Then just a summary on the metrics committee. I, I think the, the best data point was that there's, over the course of the year, there were no documented cases of in-school transmission, which I, I'm as a member of the school district proud of. I think that means that what we did in the schools worked. You know, there's obviously factors we can't control, but what we did in the schools worked. So I, a lot of work went into that by administration, teachers, parents. But I think that's one of the most exciting things that we were able to get through, you know, up to now at least, to hopefully it happened. Get through this without the school being the reason that someone got sick, which I think is really spectacular. The, the committee was very dedicated. There was a lot of administrators, teachers, expert community members. I think it was notable that for seven fifteen AM meeting over the course of a year, I don't think there was a meeting that we were below nineteen out of the twenty people on the meeting. It was really almost every single week, almost every single time, all twenty people. Which again, goes into a commitment from all the different groups that were involved. And then one final factoid, the ninety-four percent of teachers and administrators that voluntarily got their COVID vaccines, I think is a model for, for when we think about what happens with our students. This community supports things voluntarily, and to get to mandate is, is a, is a high bar. And if the community can support a voluntary number that's, that's aggressive, that I think we need to be very careful and not go down the path of mandatory because that has all sorts of other implications for all sorts of things. Unless, of course, it's mandated by the state and then it is what it is. It, again, it was a nice, I wouldn't say surprised because we have high expectations in the district, but it was, it was a nice validation that, like I said, ninety-four plus percent of the people working in the school district got the vaccine voluntarily. That's a very high number and much higher than most people would have expected before this program started. Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
Okay, now I think I can turn it over safely. Thank you.
Now I'll take it. Okay, so it is time for public comments, which will be accepted in person and remotely via Zoom. Unless someone's hiding, I don't see any community members in person. So Mr. Devante, are there any remote participants? Okay, great, thank you. So we will move on to old business. There are two items here. One, quickly, we have had ongoing equity work of the board on our agenda. I wanted to propose the idea of, we are, it is our hope that this is an important element of the strategic plan. And so the strategic plan, and so, unless somebody disagrees, it would be my recommendation that we remove this from the monthly agenda and see where the strategic plan takes it and hope that that is where this work will continue. It's clearly a high priority for us, but I don't see a need for it on a monthly basis at this point.
Well, I would suggest we can take it off, but if people have an idea moving forward, we could, they could just raise their hand on the new business and, we're out of a new idea.
Absolutely. That's great. Okay, terrific. So, for the second item, I'm going to turn it over to Frank Panzico as a follow-up. He had some observations about the House bill that we discussed last month.
I'll try to keep this short. I think there's really two topics. One was a specific bill, and then the other is a longer-term discussion on the way the board addresses ISB topics, legislation topics in general. That's not what we're going to talk about today. So, I'll just update on this specific item. House Bill 7, for those of you that don't have it memorized, was a school consolidation proposal. Basically, it took the concept of consolidating school districts away from school districts and put it into the hands of a statewide commission. The statewide commission had like 30 members, but basically, almost all of them were state officials. There was a representative for the North Suburban Cook County, one parent or teacher, and then other sets of counties. So, it really was very separated from a day-to-day input standpoint, and the idea was to come up with a proposal, and basically, then, that's the recommendation, and it's, that's what's recommended by the state. There was very little input beyond that. It was voted down in the committee, fairly close vote from the people that voted, bipartisan on yays and nays, significant more than half the people abstained, which is, voted out of the committee that was voting on the floor, more than half abstained. Never clear what that means exactly. Our representative for this district, this area, Jennifer Gong, was one of the abstainers. So, if this item comes up again, that means she probably didn't have enough input and is something that we could consider, whether we want to provide some input. There is a list of items that President Fabs documented, and I'm not going to go through all of them, but since I've spent some time on this, just one or two real quick ones. There was a question, what's the optimal size for a district? It turns out, our high school district, our high school district, Nutria, is actually like the fifth-largest high school, so it's in the top 3% of high school sizes. Our grade school as a whole is in the top 3% of the state. When you start breaking it down to like WTHS and HMS, it's a similar type of numbers. So, our particular district and our particular township are already quite large. The issue is, you know, like, you could look at things like Avoca or Kettleworth size type of thing. There is no constraint in the bill on how you consolidate it. The concept was really left open-ended, so it could be that you transform unit districts, it could be that you combine, you know, Nutria and Highland Park, or Nutria and Evanston. I mean, it really, really was, the committee was going to come up with something and say this is what it is. So, it died for this year. It didn't seem to have like super-strong support, but there is a lot of room for people to give input one way or the other, and that's really all we need to know for now. If anybody has any other questions, they can ask me offline, because I did some more research on this, but those are the highlights.
Thank you so much for taking this on and leading us through it and keeping it on our radar. Is there any other old business? Okay, so, for new business, just quickly, hopefully, board members know this, but for public record, and we will make sure this is on the website, our committee membership, we do function as committee of the whole, that's not changing, but structurally, our strategy committee will be led by Lisa, along with Ann, Frank, and Karen. Facilities will be led by Frank, along with Ann, John, and Bonnie. And then, our finance committee will be led by John, along with Bonnie, Lisa, and Karen. Nobody has to memorize that, but we will have that on our website. And then, in terms of our board representation, Ann Hart will take over the Wixie representation. Mr. Panzico will continue with the village-wide BTO. The insurance committee will be participated with Ann Hart, and the parent-teacher behavior advisory will be led by Bonnie Kim, and our monthly updates on legislation and IASB will also be provided by Bonnie Kim. So, we will put that on our website, but just an update here, and then I will turn it over to you for the calendar.
Yes, the board has been provided the committee of the whole meeting calendar. It follows the same pattern of meeting dates and times as was in place this year. And so, if there's any questions, or otherwise, we will close those dates.
I know for sure that I'm going to be out of town on August 16th date.
Okay.
I'll be back in town on the 17th. If, I don't know if we want to change it because of just me, but if we can, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Other comments?
What are the asterisks for?
I think the asterisks indicate that they fall a little outside of the pattern of the typical meeting.
In December, we have to fit in multiple meetings before the winter holidays.
Their interest in us looking at moving the committee of the whole to the 17th instead of the 16th of August.
I would prefer that as well, honestly.
Okay, so, we will allow everyone the opportunity to look at calendars, and if you could get back to us by the end of the week, if you do have a conflict, that would be wonderful, and otherwise, we will make that adjustment. If we don't hear of any conflicts, we'll also want to administratively check our calendars as well. I'm not sure we can do that in real time, but we will do that over the next couple of days, and if it seems clear enough for everyone, we can make that adjustment to the 17th. We will update you at the board meeting.
Do you want to continue on with the board packet software?
Yes, thank you. We're really excited about this. As a district, we have been considering alternatives for board of education software platforms. Many districts use services such as Board Docs or Board Books that provides an all-in-one solution, both for board members to be able to access the information that's sent to you in both a confidential and a public way, and provide some security in the information that's being provided to you, but also then provides the public with that same view. Right now, the service that we use is a little more difficult to manipulate behind the scenes, provides a little less security than we believe should be provided to the board and to the community, and also means that the board receives information in a couple of different ways, and that gets to be a little complicated as well. So, we've looked at a couple of different options. Having reviewed the options, we would like to recommend transitioning to Board Docs for the 21-22 school year, and we'll be working with the representative. Unless there's objection, we'll work with the representative from Board Docs to make that transition happen over the July month, so we'll start in August with a new platform. Again, if you've followed along with many of the other school districts, you likely have navigated Board Docs in your lifetime. It's pretty easy to follow, and we do believe it will be a useful transition for us, for you, and for the community as well.
Bringing us back in the current day by removing the copying and dropping off of Board Packs.
And that too, yes. That will assist with that, because it will just be easier to access everything, yes. Thank you. Frank?
Yeah, the Board Docs, I have looked at other districts. The sad part in other districts is they're often not populated, and I know we do a really good job, and like I said, looking at our website. Our website, can always be better, but our website is better than most of the other districts when I try to find the information. So, I'll appreciate the work that's been done on that, and it's valuable, because it's really hard to find this information in most other school districts. I think you start going five levels deep, and then you get a dead end, and we're much better at that, so I appreciate the work that's been done on that and continue. One small technical issue for the next Monday, for the board meeting, if we have encrypted the same password, since historically, we've changed it when we get some board members.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
I have to admit that that's fine, but we're going to go to something else, but if we want to do that, we'll need a new password.
Thank you. Well, then, we will proceed. Thank you for your support.
Not sure who to turn over for the Wixie meeting.
Yeah, so, the Willmet Community Special Education Agreement historically aligns their board meetings and advisory committee meetings with the Willmet District 39 budget planning process. This year, the budget approval process will be happening in June, so we're going to be canceling the May Wixie meeting and rescheduling for June 14th, so that it's aligned with District 39. So, it will be June 14th at 3:15 p.m.
I add one, new business. So, there's a bill, it's called Senate Bill 508, it's currently sitting, I think, in the revenue committee, and it's of interest, because what I think it does is, remember how we were talking about the budget? There's a certain amount every year that we reserve, because we know we're going to pay it back to the taxpayers, and what it does is, instead of, is my understanding of the bill, is that it'll take that amount, which is the amount the district loses every year, and payments back to taxpayers, and then puts it into the reassessment pool for the next year. So, the school district doesn't ultimately lose the money. It's a timing difference. So, I think what happens is the school district pays it out, but then, the missing amount goes back into the amount of revenue that's levied back out. So, this way of doing things is my understanding of how they do it in Texas. So, there's lots of good, you know, shall we say, Republican, you know, arguments for this, and it's actually, there's a bipartisan bill that's in front of the revenue committee right now. It's something, you know, I clearly need to look at it more, but this came up last week, and I think it's interesting and something we should think about supporting. So, it could definitely, oh, yeah.
Well, I just didn't know if you knew the timing of it.
I don't know. I mean, it's, there's a hearing this week at some point, but it's in a long list of bills, so I have no idea what's going on. I haven't done much work on it, so.
I'm just wondering if we have enough time to learn about it and then have a discussion of our next committee of the whole meeting, or if not.
Probably. I mean, I think what I would suggest is maybe a phone call to the sponsor and ask them what's going on and who came up with it. So, there's a bunch of sponsors in the Senate and the House. I can send you some notes, Bonnie. Yep.
Perfect. So, let's do that, and then you can fill us in.
Yep.
For our next meeting. Great.
We'll make sure that that is added then under new business at the next meeting.
Thank you. Any other new business? Okay, so, may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss negotiations and specific personnel.
I have a second.
Second.
Great. Motion carried. We are now adjourned to executive session, and the time is 10:54. Oh, nope, sorry. Before that, will the clerk please call the roll?
Chancey's ready.
Yes.
Ann Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Frank Panzico.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Yes.
Karen Stone.
Yes.
Amy Phelan.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. We are now adjourned to executive session, and the time is 10:55.